All right. Call the meeting to order, want to welcome everybody here. Before we get started, I know we have a few public hearings today, but I'm going to ask councillor Siemens if you can bring the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Jets are up two nothing, you realize that. As we have done the last number of years, we spend Easter in Calgary with our daughter, Rida. Calgary is a fine city, as one can see the majestic Rocky Mountains on a clear day. The city has a very diverse population, everyone seems to be in a hurry and they don't look you in the eye. We took our nine-year-old grandson along and so our entertainment included wave pools and water slide parks. Of course, one can't spend time in Calgary without walking through Canada's largest pro-bass store, which has an amazing array of wild animals that are standing all over the place and fish that are swimming in these huge fish tanks. Calgary is a city that boasts over 850 kilometers of bike and walking paths, including the two things that Steinbach pathways don't have: hills and corners. Another thing that is interesting is that Good Friday and Easter Sunday were just another day unless one celebrates Easter through one's church or family. Stores were open regular hours, the garbage trucks ran their regular routes, and construction workers were working on construction sites. Quite a difference how Easter is celebrated in Steinbach, or even Manitoba for that matter. Here it is truly a time off to spend with family and friends. We have in the past attended various churches in Calgary. A neat story happened when I was talking to the pastor of an Alliance church that we went to one Easter Sunday. I ended up talking to the pastor at the meal that was served after the morning service, and he told me the story of his congregation. Today it has over eighty-five different nationalities in their congregation. They're located in the northwest corner in a very culturally diverse area of Calgary. They were a small congregation of roughly a hundred to a hundred and twenty people, all young families. They began a ministry of serving the community that surrounds them, and they started it with a road hockey evening on Friday nights. The young men in the congregation were all hockey players, as many Canadians are, and they decided to play road hockey on Friday nights. They installed portable boards and they ended up boosting up the outdoor lighting as needed and even painted lines. Just the noise, the bright lights, and the laughter attracted many from the area. For the last twelve years or so, every Friday night, road hockey is played in their parking lot, but not in one portable rink, but three portable outdoor rinks on the church parking lot. Another congregational member plays a French horn in the Calgary Symphony. She had the dream of starting a brass band in the church. She invited anyone from the church and from the area who had ever played a musical instrument or wanted to relearn or continue to play to be part of the symphony. It isn't a brass band anymore, it is now an orchestra with over eighty people of all ages, relearning the instruments that they played, in some cases they had put down forty years ago after high school. Any and all individuals were accepted to come and practice every Thursday night, and they put on two performances a year. Another member started a drama club that meets every Tuesday evening. Another began a youth basketball program that now runs over a hundred and forty youth teams in a basketball league supported mostly by the area churches. Another began a pottery-making chorus that meets every Monday night. That in turn began to bring people to the church for Saturday and Sunday services. The church is in growth mode and supports an active attendance of well over twenty-five-hundred people a week. Easter Sunday was a collection of all these people, eighty-five different nationalities, who celebrated Easter morning like I've never witnessed before. Quite something, and certainly not a way a Minotaur reacts on Sunday morning. But back to Calgary, the contrast between what's happening in the commercial retail sector of Calgary and what happens in the churches is very different from what happens in Steinbach. Calgary is a great place to visit and to take part in all the different things that they have to offer, but I'll still take Steinbach with its limited pathways on how we celebrate Easter as a community with retail stores closed and in many homes, family gatherings are still a priority.
Thank you, councillor Siemens. It's always good to see what is going on in other communities, we can learn what we like about our community and we can learn what we'd like to change. Thank you. All right, we have the agenda in front of us, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Penner, any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the minutes in front of us from March twentieth, you've all had a chance to review those, can I have someone move that, please? Councillor Swagster, moved by councillor Siemens, any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. There's no business arising from the minutes. We are just past seven thirty-five, so we will go into the public hearing process. I will now close the council meeting and open the public hearing for variation V twenty-eighteen oh four, this is in regards to one seventy-two Chrysler Gate. This starts on page four for council's reference. Mr. Warkantino, ask you to introduce this, please, and then we'll proceed to the public hearing.
Yes, this is application for variance filed V dash two zero one eight dash zero four with a city civic address of one seventy-two Chrysler Gate. The owner and applicant of the variance is Edward and Sandra Voth. Purpose of the variance application is to allow a rear yard setback of sixteen point nine feet, whereas the RLD residential low-density zone requires a minimum of twenty-five feet. The applicants are proposing to build a covered and screened-in sunroom on the rear of the duplex. Notices pursuant to the planning act have been issued, there's no written correspondence on file with respect to the application. As mentioned, it does arise from the applicant's intent to enclose an existing deck, and recommendation from administration is that city council approve the application for variance subject to any new information that may be provided.
All right, thank you. We do have the applicant here today. Does the applicant wish to speak before I ask for any objections? No, thank you. I will give you a chance to speak later if you so choose. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? One last time, anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, council, do you want to wish to hear from the applicant before I close the public hearing? No, thank you. One last chance if you would like to speak, Mr. Voth, but no, thank you. All right, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Fair?
I'll move to approve.
Move to approve, thank you, seconded by councillor Funk, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's, the properties are becoming smaller and smaller and so people are trying to get as much onto the property as what they can. I can easily see why anybody would want to have a sunroom in the back of their house, I wouldn't want to be without mine, and so I think this is probably not a bad thing. Right now, there's nothing developed in the back, who knows what's going to be back there, but maybe a ten-story apartment block back there, I don't know. I think this will be good for them, so.
Thank you. Councillor Funk, anything further?
Thank you, yes, through you.
There is no ten-story apartment block, just to be fair.
Just trying to scare them.
Okay, I think you scared a lot of people.
I think councillor Fair was just trying to scare, it sounds like, from what I understand, it could be residential that's behind there. But no, this is straightforward application, doesn't look like there'll be adverse effect to anything, any properties that are around it, so I think it, common sense is just approve this and let everyone look happy about their application.
All right, thank you. Further discussion from council? Anything in closing? All right. Call for the question, all those in favor? Approved, thank you. We'll move to six B, the variation V twenty-eighteen oh five, this is in one eighty-five Woodhaven Avenue. This starts on council's page fourteen. I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Warkantino, I'll ask you to introduce this, please.
This is application for variance filed V dash two zero one eight dash zero five, property one eighty-five Woodhaven Avenue. The owner of the property is Rest Haven Nursing Home of Steinbach Inc., with the application being Chantal Hallery of FT3 Architecture Landscape Interior Design. Purpose of the variance is to allow a front yard setback of eleven feet six inches where the RHD residential high-density zone requires a minimum setback of twenty-five feet. The application, or the applicants are proposing to build an addition onto the current Rest Haven Nursing Home. Notices pursuant to the planning act have been issued, there is no written correspondence on file. With respect to the proposed variance application, there are some concerns that have been raised by administration with respect to the property. With respect to the front yard setback, that is a significant encroachment within the required setback of more than fifty percent, given the general area and neighborhood consisting primarily of single-family houses, is a matter of concern that administration has raised, and with that, the recommendation is that city council deny the request, or the application for variance.
Thank you. We do have the applicant here today. Does the applicant wish to speak? If so, please take the podium, I know it's a tight grouping here, you'll have to go around the back. Please take the podium, please state your name, your address, your civic address, and then you can proceed.
Very good, good evening. My name is Gerald Peters, I'm with FT3 Architecture Landscape Interior Design. I'm an architect in principle, and Chantal Hallery, who's the applicant, is one of my partners. My civic address is sixty-six Tamaran Drive in Winnipeg. We're pleased to be here this evening on behalf of Rest Haven Nursing Home and Southern Health. The application is for an expansion to Rest Haven Nursing Home to be Rest Haven Personal Care Home. The project is a hundred and forty-two new resident beds for Rest Haven. They'll be divided into four small houses. Each house has twelve residents with their own living room, dining room, and kitchen, so a much more of a residential feel. The building is three stories in height, and the variance is here along Woodhaven that we're looking for, this is Woodhaven, so we are encroaching on the required setback there. What we have done with the design is to reduce the scale of the building, it is a three-story building, but we are looking to have a pitched roof, and we do have stepped facade there with window treatments and so forth to try to make it look more residential, more appropriate for the neighbors. The neighbors across the street where the variance is being requested are sideyards to those homes, so they're not facing the front yards of the two homes that are immediately In order to keep things brief, I think I'll stop there, but if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time before we proceed to the public? Councillor Swagster and then councillor Fair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so just to clarify, if you were not granted the variance, does that mean that you would not be able to construct what you were planning? There is no other configuration that is possible that works?
We've looked at a number of different configurations and they don't fit on the site with the program that we do have, so, yes.
Thank you, councillor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you. One question, have the neighbors across the street been, has this been discussed with the neighbors at all, and what has their response been?
Well, I'll allow David Drieger to speak to that, there has been an open house and all of the neighboring homes were invited to attend.
Yeah, David Drieger, CEO for Haven Group. We sent out fifty or so letters, except to ourselves, regarding the variance, and we held an open meeting on March fourteenth, and from the fifty households that letters were sent to, we had four attendees, and the four attendees did not seem to be concerned about the variance at all, it was more other things such as how lighting would be, how the fence would be in the back and so forth, so there was no, nothing against it as it related to the variance itself.
Okay, thank you. Further questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none, thank you, I may call you up again. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions about this application? Okay, yep, please take the podium, state your name and your address.
My name's Timothy McAllister, I live at one twenty-one Geesbrett Street, which is across from the property, looking to have the variance adjacent to or parallel to the property, at the corner of Woodhaven and Geesbrett. And just a question I have, if you don't get the variance, what would your plan be?
Okay, thank you. We'll let them answer that in a little bit, but are there any other questions?
Well, I have a statement to make too, and then the chair to pass around. Okay, I was hoping to have that question answered beforehand.
Okay, then I'll ask you to just take a seat briefly and I'll get you to take the podium one more time. The reason we are always at the podium is because this is recorded both on video and as well as audio. And if you could just always speak to the chair as well.
Absolutely. In response to the question that's been raised, Mr. Mayor, our client would obviously request us to go back and look at redesign options. Likely, we would have to reduce parking stalls on the site, which currently meet the requirements, and we may be underparked on the site, which possibly could add to street parking or other things like that. So, we thought that this was the best solution, considering all of the variables, but we would have to go back to redesign.
Very good, thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
You want to ask a follow-up question to the applicant?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay, councillor Fair, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you, if this was to be denied, is there a possibility of going higher?
That's not something we have been looking at in response to this issue because of a number of code issues that get introduced with this particular type of occupancy, so going higher would significantly increase the cost of the, of construction.
Thank you. Mr. McAllister, now I'll get you to finish your thoughts. Great, thank you.
I just want to start out by saying it's a pleasure to be here, thank you for this opportunity to speak. And firstly, I believe Rest Haven does an excellent and essential work for our community. I witnessed it firsthand as my grandfather spent the final months of his life in Rest Haven, he was treated professionally, with respect and care, and later passed away peacefully. I'm very pleased with the upcoming Rest Haven expansion, as more beds will be available to elderly people who need this care. However, I object to variance V two thousand eight dash oh five for a front yard setback of eleven point five feet. This variance violates the important community standards that are part of the reason Steinbach is an excellent community that I am proud to call home. Some of these standards include, from the Steinbach zoning bylaw number two thousand fifty-five, section three point four, classification of uses subsection eighty-one point two, in cases of infill development, in order to comply with section two point two point one of the city official community plan, the developer shall ensure that a multifamily development is generally compatible and consistent with the existing neighborhood in terms of setbacks, scale, and character. And in that Steinbach official community plan, section two point one objective states that to maintain and enhance existing neighborhood stability and quality is a goal of the official community plan. Section two point two point one on infill development says one intent is to give consideration to the needs and concerns of the existing neighborhood when evaluating proposed infill development. And then following that policy C says that infill development shall be generally compatible and consistent with the existing neighborhood in terms of setback, height, and character. Finally, for the zoning laws, bylaws, Steinbach zoning bylaw number two thousand fifty-five, back to that, section four point one, dimensional standards, point one hundred point one A, says the owner has a continuing obligation to maintain the minimum yards and other open spaces required in this bylaw. And following that is table four point one, that lists dimensions for residential high-density, and it's been stated already that minimum front yard must be minimum twenty-five feet. To close, in order to maintain and enhance the existing neighborhood stability and quality, I ask that city council deny this variance and maintain the yard setback standard of a minimum of twenty-five feet, as established in the current City of Steinbach zoning bylaw number two thousand fifty-five. This will give consideration to the needs of the existing neighborhood while this excellent addition to the community may be developed. Examples of the existing neighborhood quality, including adequate front yard setbacks, may be viewed from the corner of Woodhaven and Geesbrett in the attached pictures, and I've provided some pictures there showing along the street, kind of the character of the neighborhood, which I'm proud to call home. I'm also proud that Rest Haven is there too, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the objector at this time? Yes, go ahead councillor Fair.
Thank you, through you. So first of all, if I'm getting this wrong, maybe administration could correct me, but my understanding is, the only issue here is that it wants to be closer to the street. If we deny the variance, they could build the same building without really coming for variance or anything, just have it, you know, ten to fifteen feet further with exactly the same building. So you, in your opinion, you feel that ten to fifteen feet is a significant difference?
I think so, there's a sidewalk there, our family walks there a lot, and it's nice to have the green space. I don't know all the reasons behind some of these setbacks, why they're determined to be, in this case, twenty-five feet, but there must be some logic behind it, and I imagine that some open space is behind that, and this being a residential neighborhood, I think that open space is valuable.
Thank you. Further, any supplementary?
Just one more follow-up, if you don't mind. I know you're mentioning infill housing, fitting in with the neighborhood, I guess in my opinion here, it's pre-existing, it's not removing, let's say, residential homes to put up this building, it's been there for a long time. So does that not impact your, does that impact your opinion in terms of that it be considered infill housing, because it's probably even predated probably your time living in that house?
Definitely, yeah.
So it has been there for a long time, does that influence, it's not typical infill housing?
Yeah, my position stays the same, because part of the reason we moved to Steinbach and to that house was because of the surrounding neighborhood, we like the character of that neighborhood, and of course, you know, we understood that was private property, and a private corporation has the right to build on their property. But I also know that, you know, there are standards set in place for a reason, and generally, there's more order and predictability, which is a good thing for a community when you adhere to those standards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this a question to the objector?
Yes, objector.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you. I understand that the trees that are there are all going to be staying there, and I doubt the house is, the building is going to be any higher than that. Do you think that that's something that would mitigate your position on that at all, or how do you feel about that?
We love the trees, they're beautiful, and it's great that they are staying there. That being said, you know, there's always a risk of more shadows with the building being there, and I think three stories would be taller than those trees, they're not very, very tall. So, you know, we spend a lot of time on our yard, we enjoy our yard, and, and again, you know, our property adheres to the bylaws, we'd like our neighbor to as well.
Thank you. Any further questions for the objector? Seeing none, thank you for now, thank you. Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? One final, anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to address some of those concerns further and in closing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just follow up with a couple of things. We did do a shadow study of the existing facility and the new facility, the existing conditions are on that side of the drawing and the new conditions are here. What the study shows is that the existing trees on Geesbrett are in fact providing as much of a shadow as the new building would, so there's no increased shadowing that occurs on neighboring properties. Yes, on the existing property, there will be some increased shadowing. So we thought that that was an important issue for us. You are correct, we are attempting to retain all of the trees on Geesbrett and many of the trees on Woodhaven as well. They are significantly developed trees, probably in the neighborhood of forty feet high. I would also like to comment that the property line that we're requesting setback from is on the other side of the sidewalk, so all of the pedestrian sidewalks, of course, remain, the public space remains, and the building will be eleven and a half feet back from the property line, so it doesn't encroach on the public spaces. I think that's all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and I will open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Swagster?
I'll make the motion that we approve.
Approve, seconded, councillor Fair, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, when we have an application like this, I think it's important to understand that we have our bylaws and our zoning bylaw for a reason, but we also have variance applications for a reason, because there are circumstances when you have a property that's unique, and particularly when there's a development that has some unique characteristics, where we have the opportunity to allow an exception. And in this case, I think we have one of those circumstances, where we have a significant expansion happening to Rest Haven, these are space care home beds that we have requested for a long time, that we're looking forward to see happen, and in order for it to happen the way that it's been planned, in order to have it designed optimally, they need to have this additional space. If we don't grant this space, then it's going to impact something else, it's going to affect the amount of parking that's available, and that creates, that has an impact on neighborhoods when you start taking away parking spaces, because then people are, there's a whole lot more people parking on the street, and that will affect the neighbors. Or it could affect heights of the building, or it could affect in terms of other places it's placed. I'm convinced by the presenters that they have considered the different options and that this is the best option, that this is the best option available. I believe that they've taken the efforts to communicate with the neighborhood and give neighbors an opportunity to express concerns in a preliminary way, and based on all the information I'm hearing here, I believe that the impact in the neighborhood is not significant enough to merit denying an application like this, so I will be voting in favor.
Thank you. Further discussion, councillor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is something that we have long had much pressure to add personal care beds in this community, and so I think that, given the fact that all the systems are in place, and they've tried to mitigate all the circumstance around it so that it will fit in there, I think that we'd be remiss if we did not approve this.
Thank you. Further discussions from council? Councillor Penner?
I will support the motion. One of the comments I'd like to make, in terms of when there's an existing business, I'll say for lack of a better term, that's been around for a while in a certain area, it is important that we as a council also respect that as development comes around these businesses. I look at the Barkman Concrete, for example, they did this huge expansion that we approved because it had been there for so long, and the housing developments around it came after Barkman Concrete's been there. So I think it is important for us to respect existing businesses, even when housing comes around it. I feel the same way about this one, this expansion has been talked about probably upwards of ten years, I would think has been in the works, and so we know that, and we know our community really needs it. So as councillor Swagster says, we have the variance process for a reason, and I think in this case as well, it makes good sense.
Thank you. Further discussion, councillor Funk?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to add that this land also, we have to remember, this land has been set aside for an expansion just like this. This was always intended to be used this way, and it's being used in the way that the land was bought for and intended to, and I also agree with councillor Swagster that the degree of difficulty with this does not outshine the benefits.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? All right, council, obviously, we have clear guidelines for how areas are developed, we have setbacks that are standard, and we have the variation process which allows us to look at things on an individual basis. We've had clear information from the applicants, and we also had another We've had clear information from the applicants, and we also had an objector here today talking about, uh, making sure that the neighborhood is, is respected and, and, and it looks, uh, and it looks like it fits into the neighborhood. I think, uh, what we heard from the applicant today was that, uh, obviously, they've, uh, put considerable effort into looking at different options and how to best fit into the neighborhood, how to best, uh, be cost-effective, and how best to be, uh, respectful, uh, of, of the space that they're wanting to occupy. And, and, uh, seeing that information, especially seeing even the shadow, uh, study that was done, I think is, is significant, where you see there's no additional shadowing done, uh, outside the property line, uh, or, or limited outside the property line. And so I think that's, uh, also important information as well to see. So with that, I think it's important that, uh, we move this project forward and, uh, we see that, uh, approval is in place. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We'll now move to the third public hearing, and that's in regards to six C, the conditional use twenty eighteen oh-two. This is on page twenty-three for council's information. This is in regards to thirty-two PTH fifty-two West. I'm going to close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workantene, I'll ask you to introduce this, please.
Uh, yes, application for conditional use file CU dash two zero one eight dash zero two, and thirty-two PTH fifty-two S. The owner and applicant, uh, of the, uh, property is Schinkel Properties, Inc. Purpose of the conditional use application is to allow a funeral home to locate on the subject property. Notices pursuant to the Planning Act have been issued. Uh, there, uh, are five pieces of correspondence that, uh, were received from the, uh, date of printing the agenda package that, uh, were placed in council's bins for, uh, your information. Uh, other than that, there are, uh, no other written pieces of correspondence on file. Uh, with respect to the application, um, the, uh, location of a funeral home in the C-two commercial community zone is a, uh, use that, uh, subject to a conditional use hearing is, uh, is possible. Uh, should council feel that the proposed use, uh, will not negatively affect the surrounding property or alter the essential character of the neighborhood, it may proceed to give, uh, approval to the application, subject to any additional m- information that may be provided at the public hearing.
Thank you. We do have the applicant here today. If the applicant, applicant does wish to speak, go ahead. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, there, uh, Justin Schinkel, Eighth Brand Street. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Uh, today we're here representing the business owner, because this is a very small industry, and, uh, business owners don't, uh, want their employer to know that they're applying. Um, the, the propo- the business that is proposed here is a funeral home that will occupy the whole site. There are going to be twenty-five parking stalls on-site, and there's lots of o- off-site parking as well. The fenced area in the back will be coming down to accommodate that. Um, there's going to be no crematorium, and this buil- they, the ten- the business owners picked this building in particular because CFIA that used to be there, uh, had a fully-equipped inspection area, uh, that was designed to handle sensitive materials in the back, and it's already existing for them, so it saves them a bunch of money for tenant improvements. Um, there's only going to be a small chapel on the, in, inside of this, uh, building, uh, consultation offices, and an embalming area. Um, we, um, parking is also available at the Fastenal Building across the street, um, and at nighttime that we can, that we've made available. Uh, additionally, uh, we own twelve units and three commercial units at Twenty West, and we wouldn't want to do anything that would reduce that value or negatively impact the community, obviously because we're invested there as well as, uh, in other parts of the area and in, within the community. Uh, we've talked to a few concerned neighbors, mostly about parking or traffic. Uh, we don't believe this should be an issue because it's a small chapel and the, which will limit the number of guests that can attend. Uh, uh, on, on top of that, uh, funerals tend to be, uh, typically on not peak flow times for traffic, so they'll be either in the evening or during the afternoons, so it's not going to be with rush hour. Um, this business, we believe, will be ve- very quiet compared to other potential uses such as retail, uh, and will have a lower impact. And since death and taxes are two things that we can't avoid, this is an, this is an ence- essential service that the community needs, and like all of us, would like to avoid as well, just as much as taxes.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Schinkel. Just before you leave the, the podium, are there any questions for Mr. Schinkel from council? Just to clarify, how, how many seats will there be approximately?
One hundred.
One hundred, thank you. All right, thank you. You will be called up later. I'm sure there might be some objectors and some, uh, some additional questions. So, anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Okay. You've seen the routine. Take, take the podium, please state your name and your address, and they'll give you a few minutes to state, uh, state your thoughts.
All right. My name is, uh, Carly Frye. I have been a condo owner for almost three years at Twenty West. It was my first home purchase as I moved out of my parents' house. Um, my number-one concern here is my property value. Um, living next to a funeral home is, research have shown, and other people in the building have done research, saying that this will impact our property value greatly. And as someone who lives in a one-bedroom condo that isn't worth very much, any decrease is very detrimental to myself. Number two, parking. So, they say that they have twenty-five parking spo- stalls. There are only eight stalls in front of this building. The rest are behind, where the general public will not know that they are there. Right now, on a daily basis, parking is a struggle. It can be a Tuesday at two PM, a Saturday at noon, or any time of the day, parking is difficult. Uh, Little Caesar's is open up, open late, they take up a lot of parking on the front side during the day with all the offices and denture clinic, et cetera. They take up the entire space in the front. In the back, we have Viet House. Now, the people that come to Viet House, they have the idea that they're just running in for two seconds, so they don't think that it's a problem if they park in someone else's spot. Now, this is incredibly frustrating. When you come home, it's minus forty, and someone is parked in your spot. Now, I can't imagine that that problem would get any better with a funeral home. Now, Schinkel Properties says that there will be a hundred seats. Now, have you ever been to a funeral that you can exactly say how many people are going to be there? I've been to a funeral where they thought there was going to be seventy, and three hundred showed up. It's not something you sell tickets for. You cannot predict the exact number of people that will show up to a funeral. It's just not possible. So, the parking around the area, the street parking is incredibly limited, the fifty-two highway is very busy, peak times, when Southland Church gets let out, I can't get off my driveway. Certain times like that, traffic, rush hour, it's impossible. So I can't even imagine what would happen if a funeral home was there and a hundred cars were tr- suddenly trying to park. It just, it's just, you can't even imagine it. If you don't know the property, I would suggest that you go take a look, drive by, and see what I'm talking about, and see how limited it is. And just for the sake of a visual, my driveway to my condo would share the exact same driveway to this funeral home. So we would be sharing it with all the traffic and all the funeral vehicles as well. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, uh, for Ms. Frye at this time? Is there anyone else wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Okay, please, uh, oh, Mr. Zodoin first, and then we'll let you go after, Mr. Zodoin.
I guess I have a couple of questions of the applicant. They say...
So, sorry, I'll, I'll just ask you to take...
Marcel.
I think most of us know who you are.
J O D O Y N, for the record. Three seventy-five Hanover Street. Um, the applicant indicates that, um, there's additional parking across at Fast, uh, Fastenal, which is a property owned by the Schinkels, as, as of right now. And they own some units in the property, the condo pro- property right next door, until they sell those. And I guess it, it begs the question, and, and maybe, uh, my friend can answer it, is whether they got the consent of the tenant at Fastenal to allow additional parking there, first of all. Secondly, more importantly, is people who attend funerals are generally speaking elderly people, okay? Um, we lose most of our loved ones when they're older, and that's important in terms of parking. And to expect people to, if, if the tenant, or it's part of the, the lease agreement that, uh, Schinkel Properties can increase or give parking, um, to other, uh, facilities, if that's a right in the lease, I'm not sure it would be, but if it is, to expect people, elderly people, to walk across the provincial highway number fifty-two when it's forty below, okay, is absolutely unbelievable, quite frankly. And that's not additional parking. The additional parking that my friend talks about next door at the condos that haven't sold yet, okay, is an additional parking as soon as they're sold. So, let's talk about what type of parking that we have for a funeral home and what the bylaws of the city of Steinbach provide. There are two aspects of the bylaw. One, if, if it's a place of public assembly, you require one seat for every six square feet of assembly area. I attempted to get from the city a copy of the conditional use application, but I'm told, I was told by administration that that's not available to me. So I don't know how big the assembly area is going to be, but if that aspect of the zoning bylaw applied, which is one thirteen point two of the zoning bylaw, there's absolutely no way there'd ever be enough parking, ever, okay, um, at this facility. So, there is a second part of the zoning bylaw that talks about funerals, and my friend can take the position, and rightfully so perhaps, that it's the, the zoning bylaw that's specifically applicable to funeral homes that should apply, which logically, of course, makes sense. Um, but this is a conditional use application for a reason, and we all know that. And so, what does a funeral home require in terms of spaces? And there's a minimum parking designation that's required, as you probably all know, and this is a minimum set out in the zoning bylaws. This, the minimum is four, four, one parking s- spot for every four seats. So if Mr. Schinkel is right, this is going to accommodate one hundred, there's going to be one hundred seats, there would have to be twenty-five parking spaces, right? So we all, we all get that. And Mr. Siemens was in Calgary last week, and I tried to Google right now the bylaw requirements for the city of, uh, Calgary to see if they're the same as the city of Edmonton. And the reason that, or the same as the city of Vancouver, or the same as the city of Oshawa, all of which have public transportation. The huge difference between the city of Steinbach, which doesn't have public transportation, or a rural community, than the city of Vancouver or other places that have public transportation. The city of Edmonton, and I have it for you if you want, provides that you have to have four, one parking space for four seats, plus one parking space per funeral home vehicle. Of course, maybe that makes sense in this, in a city with public transportation. Does it make sense in the city of Steinbach? Doesn't make sense for this particular property. And I'm going to suggest to you that it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever for Steinbach. While we, we have the zoning bylaw, it's drafted by planners, our planner, no doubt, um, I don't know where he was from, but I'm prepared to guess, was from the city of Steinbach and copied the city of, city, or city of Winnipeg, rather, copied the city of Winnipeg funeral, um, bylaw, and said four seats, uh, one parking spot for four seats, which means, of course, let's figure it out, every car that comes has to have four people in it, right? Because you're not going to have elderly people walking in the middle of winter. So you'd have twenty-five, every car has to have four people in it. So what we have to do is look at reality in the city of Steinbach, and for that purpose, I was in tou- in touch with, of course, uh, Mr. Harder, who was present today, and said, "Okay, just tell us what, what your, what happens in the city of Steinbach." So maybe I've got it wrong. Maybe in the city of Steinbach, four, four, um, seats for one parking stall works. And what Mr. Harder tells me is that, in fact, they have a hundred and seventy-five parking spots, okay, for three hundred seats. Okay, so, two to one, or less than two to one, not four to one, but two to one, or less than two to one. So that by itself would be alarming, I think, to council, but what perhaps is more alarming to me is the fact that Mr. Harder communicated to me that even with that parking, as Ms. Frye has indicated, funeral attendance is predictably unpredictable. And so they, even with all of the parking that they do have, from time to time, people attending the funeral, of course, have to park somewhere else because the parking lot is full, so they go to Timber Falls, they go to the Southland Church. There's this overflow that's available. I'm sure that sometimes those businesses would rather that not, well, Timber Falls would, would rather not, that not be the case. Um, but the fact of the matter is, there is some overflow. Here, there is absolutely no place, okay, for overflow. This, right now, as it stands, and, and you'll recall that when Mr. Schinkel made the application to have the condo, uh, complex built right next to Cal Tire, which I own part of it with, uh, Gary Reimer and Mary- Marilyn Reimer, um, my major concern at that time was parking. I raised the concern and said, "You, a council, will field those concerns when they come up," and it's my understanding that some of you have in fact fielded those concerns. Uh, Ms. Frye, of course, has identified that parking, as I had predicted, would become an issue. Now, if we are to compound that problem now, I want to do so in light of Mr. Schinkel's comments, and I want to provide to you, if I can, the present site map for this property. I did email you, and I'll put it on the, on the record, asking you, of course, to attend if you had an opportunity today to the site to get some sense of, of the parking that's there. Unfortunately, the building in this case is moved to the, closer to the street. Mr. Schinkel can comment on that. I think that was as a result of a variation application to move the, the building forward, if I recall correctly. So we, all the parking's not in the front, which compounds the problem, as Ms. Frye's identified. I want to provide to you, if I can, the, uh...
Mr. Zodoin, you can actually just ha- hand it, we can, we can pass it all around here. It's all good. Oh, it's two, okay.
I can manage.
We're getting a lot of copies of our own zoning bylaws these days. Which we actually have.
So Mr. Schinkel, in his submission, talked about the fence coming down in the back, yeah, people being able to pa- park across at Fastenal, people being able to park at the condo next door because they still own a few of the units they haven't sold yet. And he talked about a fence coming down. That's actually a compound in the back that's shown, if you can see it, on the schematic that I just provided to you. And it says staff parking. You'll see in the center of that, there's actually, there's a compound there. That's the fence he's talking about coming down. It's not a fence to the back that will give you more parking. And if you drove there today, as I had hoped that you had, you'd understand what I was talking about. But when you look at this site plan, you might notice, because I've provided you with a copy of your, your byt- your own bylaw... a copy of your, your by, your own bylaw, when this site plan was put together by Schinkel Properties, and we don't have the new site plan for the parking, Mr. Schinkel has indicated there's twenty-five parking spaces, which he has to, because that's the minimum for a funeral home, without regard to employees. So, four people show up in every car, if there's a hundred people there, there's no standing room. And there's no employee parking, and there's no place for the hearse, okay? If you look at the present site plan, I want to identify for you the, my red marks on that site plan. I don't know if you, you can see the red marks on it? A parking stall in the city of Steinbach under the present bylaw, and the bylaw requires that the parking stall be not less than, okay, not less than nine feet by twenty feet. Twenty, twelve of the twenty-four don't comply with the present parking bylaw. They're eight and a half feet by twenty feet. So, of the, the parking stalls that are there now, and you can count them, half of them don't comply. Twelve of them don't comply. But the, and you look at the one wheelchair accessible parking stall. It is, in fact, shown to be twelve feet by twenty feet. Under your zoning bylaw, okay, it has to be a minimum of thirteen feet wide. So, put it in perspective, you're going to build, you're going to have a funeral home here at this, at this property, you're going to have elderly people generally attending funerals, and you're going to have one handicap or accessible parking stall. And the one that you have doesn't even comply with the city of Steinbach zoning bylaw. So, I haven't redone the schematic to try and see exactly how many parking stalls there would be, because it doesn't matter. The reality is, is, as Ms. Frye has indicated, attendance at a funeral is predictably unpredictable. And even at a small funeral, we're going to have a parking problem. And as the owner of Kaltire, the business itself, Mr. and Mrs. Reimer obviously don't want to come out and tell somebody who's about to attend a funeral for their, for one of their loved ones, whether it's their parent, or grandparent, or child, that they can't park on their parking lot, okay? It's just simply, it's not something that we would do, okay? If council approves this, we will have a chronic, a chronic parking problem at this location. Those are my comments, subject to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Jodwin? Thank you for now. Thank you. All right, are there anyone else, anyone else here wishing to object or have any questions? Okay, please take the podium, state your name and your address.
Thank you. My name's Devon Friesen. I live in the condos there, three oh one, twenty PTH, fifty-two West. I oppose this variance for a funeral home, namely for property value. When I first found out that there was a funeral home planning on being allowed to park right beside my bedroom window, one of the first things I thought about was property value. And I did some research, and what I found is that according to Realtors dot com, they ranked neighbors that kill property value. Funeral homes rank sixth nationwide. They have a habit of dropping property values by six point five percent. It's completely unacceptable. I can't afford six, six point five percent decrease in my property value. The Globe and Mail has also stated that homes near funeral homes spook some buyers. I've also asked several realtors in the community what their thoughts were on having a funeral home move into nearby homes. They've all concurred and said that there's a profound negative impact on property values just for being close to cemeteries, crematoriums, and funeral homes. I believe that the parking issues have already been addressed by Mr. Jodwin, better than I could ever relay. However, I will express my personal experiences with the parking situation currently there. I have had numerous altercations with the patrons of Viet House. I have been sworn at for asking people to leave my parking spot. I do not wish to have any altercations with people that are grieving whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. I know, I know you also wanted to state something, uh, thank you, sorry, just a second. Are there any questions for the objector? Thank you. Go ahead. Please, please state your name and your address.
My name is Hadi Kehler. I'm the owner of Albe sino Foods in the, in the building there. And my address is twenty-nine Edgewood in Steinberg. And I totally agree with the persons we're talking about here. I bought, that time that I bought this, the condo there for my business, I bought four parking spot. And my staffs came, came to work, and they said, "All parking spots fall." Like, that didn't make sense to me to pu, even plan a funeral there. So, for me, out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Yep.
Hello, my name is Jerry Corman. I with my wife, Margaret Marge Pauls, live at the condo development. We actually have the unit directly above Viet House. Uh, we initially chose the location because we felt it was a very quiet and serene place. Uh, some of you may already know, my wife has MSN lupus, and we're in a transition, we sold our house, we're in a transition to assisted living, uh, not quite dealing with end-of-life issues or palliative issues just yet. And so, the big concern that I had was the parking concern. I know it's already been addressed, it's just, I wanted to also express my concern for the parking. Uh, sometimes it does get pretty backed up, especially going into the back of the unit. And so, I'd just like to see more clarification on how the parking issue will be resolved. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we have the applicants back on the podium, at the podium, anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Okay, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Timo Gerson, owner of Grand Enter Clinic. Uh, live at, currently, Steinbach, twenty-five, the nurse gate. And I'd like to object as well. Same reason, parking, and our patients are having trouble finding parking, parking as it is already. And it's going to be hard to just put a barrier there and say, "No, those people attending the funerals can't go over there." Even if we, even if we put up signs, people are still going to go there because they know, "Okay, funeral starts at two, we're running late, we're going to park somewhere, somewhere," and then run over there, right? So, basically, same, same concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Okay.
Gary Reimer, Highway fifty-two West. Good to see you all. I would object to, I, um, this past Thursday, I decided to take some pictures of the parking on this property at four o'clock in the afternoon. Now, if they say these funerals are going to be later in the afternoons, it's not going to work. Currently, the people who come to Little Caesar's Pizza to get pizza, they park on my property. I don't object. I leave them. Most of my customers of mine, as well as these people who are going to come to these funerals, a lot of them be customers of mine. So, I do not run out there and tell them to move their car off our yard. I leave them. I've told all of my employees to move their cars to the back of my property so there's more room for these people to park, because they park around the edge of the property on my property. As a funeral, because now it's a whole different thing, they're, they're going to be very upset. And when that place is going to be parked full of cars, and it will be, my property, the entire street, that entire parking lot, the entire parking lot in the back, and if he says, "Have them walk across the street," if I'm going to be eighty years old and walk across that street at two o'clock in the afternoon, you're going to be the next person inside that building. So, I completely disagree with this. This is, this is wrong, and if they think this is a good idea, I don't think so. So, in my opinion, I'm letting the people park on the yard right now. I do not want to have to put up signs and say, "Do not park here," because I don't think that's right. As a business owner in this town, this is where I've grown up, this is where I've lived all my life, I know everybody, and I want to be respected by these people and not be an enemy of anybody.
Very good. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Anyone else wishing to object? Seeing none, I'll ask the applicant then to maybe address a few of these concerns, and then final comments, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To address property value, um, we believe that mixed use fits within this area, and although this building was built several years prior to twenty West being built, um, this use is likely a lot lower than other possible uses such as restaurants or retail. Um, and when twenty West was built, what's interesting is, is that the Canadian Food Inspection Agency was located here. And this agency, uh, did all sorts of testing, quite often for mad cow disease and other foodborne illnesses. So, what is worse, funeral homes or testing for mad cow disease? And they still bought here despite this. Uh, with regards to parking, um, I don't know the plans of the business owners, but we certainly would like to encourage them to have a rear entrance to maybe allow for parking and easier access for those back parking stalls as well. Um, this is a small business, and it's a small building. There's no way that you're going to get big funerals inside, inside the small building. Um, so I, so, so to, it's not going to be one big open Freedensfeld Hall type, just with, to set up for hundreds of people. Uh, certainly, there, some problems could be mitigated by putting up no parking signs or for, for certain businesses, even though that's maybe not the most ideal. Um, and of course, these customers are technically not allowed to park at, on neighboring properties. Um, with regards to safety of crossing the highway, um, and if this is, if this intersection is truly dangerous, uh, people are crossing there right now. Uh, maybe highways should consider, uh, possibly doing something more to make that intersection safe, because I believe that's a highway's jurisdiction. And I do agree with Mr. Jodwin that this is adequate, adequate parking according to the ratios that the city sets aside of one, one stall per four seats, and that we are asking for a variance for use, not necessarily for parking here. And despite, uh, what, I can rest assured that we will be in this community for a long time, and owners of, in this building for many, many years, so we're not cutting and running here. Um, we're going to be on this building for a long time and the commercial units and residential units at twenty West. And I can assure council that we will work with, uh, administration to make sure that our parking spot sizes will comply with all code. Yeah, thank you. Uh, open to any questions that you may have.
Any final questions for the applicant from council? Counselor Penner.
Just a quick question. You mentioned, uh, there's twenty-five parking spaces. Are those all on the yard, or is that including your, uh, free parking?
That's all on this property, so in the front and in the back, and in that back area where the fences, fenced-in compound's going to get taken down.
Question for administration.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Through you. Um, if administration could confirm, I remember, uh, a few months ago, there'd been an application for variance for Viet House to be located in this building, and my understanding is we rejected that because of parking? Is that, is that correct? Because we were concerned about parking?
Mr. Workin, uh, she's asking if you have a better memory than we do, and you probably do, so.
Yeah. Uh, the application was to vary the required parking stalls for the proposed use, and council denied the application.
One more thing through you. There was less than one hundred seats, I presume, in that restaurant space, my recollection is.
I can say, yes, the restaurant did require, well, it, it's a different calculation, because it's a, it's, it's, it's a different consideration entirely, because it's a different use.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Final comment.
Could I respond to Counselor Susan's? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I believe under current zoning, restaurant is permitted in this, in this neighborhood, so a restaurant doesn't need a conditional use. However, we ask for a conditional use for Viet House with regards to the parking, parking allotment. And I believe since then, this has all changed a whole bunch, right? So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, uh, we've...
Mayor, can I make one comment, please, in terms of, I was quoted as saying a certain thing. Um, I think Mr. Schinkel doesn't appreciate the difference between, maybe he does, between a conditional use and a variance. Um, he talks about obtaining a variance as opposed to conditional use. And understand that with respect to a conditional use, um, as you're aware, um, a conditional use is an exception, and a conditional use will only be granted if it doesn't negatively impact upon the, uh, adjoining properties. And if parking's already an issue, obviously, it's going to impact upon that. This is not a variation application or a variance application. This is a conditional use, and will only be granted, okay, despite what Mr. Schinkel says, if in fact, conditions can be imposed by council to address the concerns that have been identified. And unfortunately, there is no way a condition can be imposed in this case by council. You can't limit the number of people attending, there's, can't have people parking, because this is, in fact, is on the curve of fifty-two, and make it even worse. And Mr. Schinkel says there's people crossing there already. My guess is they're not eighty years old trying to attend a funeral. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Uh, we do give the applicant the last word normally. Uh, does applicant wish to speak any further?
We're good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we will then close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny, seconded by Counselor Swagster. Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's been a lot of, uh, different, uh, comments here. I appreciate the comments, uh, that were made by everyone. I also viewed the property. I know the fence is coming down, that would open up some, potentially would ease some of the restrictions in the back. My comments are, uh, a funeral home, I think this is a good, uh, application for a funeral home because of the type of building it is. But I do have a lot of concerns about parking. Parking concerns came from the fact that, uh, when we had discussions, as mentioned earlier by Counselor Penner, with the Viet House, uh, there was a lot of discussion over that. We've had a lot of complaints at the city regarding parking on that location. My estimation of street parking there would be five stalls, and along with the six up front and the handicap stall. People, and in my experience, uh, people don't park in the back of buildings unless they're told to, to, or unless they're directed in that location. But, so I think, I really struggle with this. The, the building was built for other purposes than this, and so they are looking for, uh, sellable and leasable space here, which I, I appreciate that, too. This is a, a new business opportunity for Steinbach, and I, I want to appreciate that, because that is valuable to, to our community. Uh, I disagree with the comments that it reduces values. Uh, my assessment kept going up, uh, all the years that the funeral home was my backdoor neighbor, and I enjoyed having him as a backdoor neighbor. And, uh, it was, uh, so, my assessment kept going up, so I don't think my property values and the home sold, my neighbor's home sold just as quickly as anywhere else. The, uh, but I think here, it's, to me, it's a little bit more common sense, it's on a curve of a highway, it has, we hear, hear lots of different complaints, lots of concerns already, and, uh, this would just add stress to that situation. And I think it would just be appropriate for us to deny it at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Swagster.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With a conditional use, we consider whether it's, it's on, this is literally a case-by-case basis, where this is not something that's automatically permitted, it's something that we look at in this particular situation. And the information that we have here from, uh, in terms of the criteria we consider is, does it negatively affect the surrounding properties, and does it alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And the one concern that we've heard most consistently from, uh, from people who live there and own businesses there is in regards to parking. We hear that parking is a struggle now. Uh, we've heard that loud and clear, it's, it's a message that, uh, that has been stated quite clearly. Um, and so, yes, this would have twenty-five stalls available, but as has been pointed out, you have a hundred seats. Funerals are different than a lot of other type of... Funerals are different than a lot of other type of events that happen, where it is tough to predict how many people are actually going to be there. And I, I hear the, the concerns of neighbors, when you have the issue of, if you're already having a struggle of people parking in your spot when they're not supposed to, that is a challenge, when you have people coming to a funeral, and now you're having to potentially deal with that. And so, when you're hearing a consistent message from people who live there and have businesses there, that there's challenges with parking now, you add this into the equation, this is a different type of use, this is different than, than, you know, you can't predict how many people are going to be there, you can say there's this many seats, but we know that there are times when you have overflow. And that point about there's, how do you deal with overflow? Is there, is, in terms of dealing with that, with that issue? These are all the types of things that we factor in when we consider, do we allow this, this type of use in this particular case? In many other cases, we absolutely would allow a funeral home, it's, it's, funeral homes provide an important service in our community, as in every community, it's something that, that we value, and, and that we need to have. But in terms of this particular property, when you consider the, the challenges of the parking, just how busy that street is, and the amount of traffic that, that you can potentially have when you have a funeral, I have to agree with the motion to deny.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I want to acknowledge Schinkel Properties, they, they do a lot for the community, they promote this community, we see requests come to us regularly, and I, I, I think that, that should not go unnoticed. Having said that, I, I, there's, I think there's no property that I've ever had as many complaints about, and I, and I can only imagine the frustration when you come home at 10 o'clock at night, and somebody's parking your stall. That would be very, very annoying, and I know I've had those calls, and so I, I do know that it is, and I, I know, I know, I know that property has a history of, of parking issues, and so, I'm, I'm going to support the motion to deny it.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Penner.
Thank you. I will support the motion as well. The reason we have these public hearing processes, precisely this reason, where we can get feedback from the neighborhood and surrounding businesses, and the neighborhood has spoken clearly with this one, and I think it's important that we acknowledge they have legitimate concerns. When it comes to parking, with past parking studies we've done in Steinbeck, one thing we have noticed is, people in Steinbeck drive, and it's not uncommon for a couple to take separate vehicles to an event, let alone there being an average of four people per vehicle. So, in, in terms of how we make that calculation, I, I do believe Steinbeck is maybe atypical, that if there's going to be 100 seats for a funeral, I wouldn't be surprised if there is virtually 100 vehicles wanting to park, or at least a good 50 wanting to park for the funeral. So, just that calculate, the parking calculation alone is enough reason for me not to support it, and as well, it's not too long ago that we denied Viet's House potential opportunity to move there for parking, and that was way less, way less of a variance than what this conditional use required. So for that reason, I'll support the motion to deny.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Funk, if you'd like to add.
Thank you, through, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank Schinkel Properties, you did a great presentation. I also want to thank the objectors, because they did a great job getting their ideas across. And it's, for me, it's very simple. It's a great use, it's a great building, it's the wrong property, and that's really what it boils down to. It's just not going to work. If we've already got parking problems, this will just compound them, and for that reason, I, I have to support the motion.
Thank you. Anything closing?
Uh, just one comment, Mr. Mayor, I think I actually was in favor of this before today, when I took a first look at it, because I think it does fit, but I think also, when I hear the information and all the issues around the building and the parking that's ready there, it is important to listen to that voice. We're not the ones who are there on a daily basis, so it is important to listen to that voice as well. Therefore, I made that motion to deny.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, we've obviously heard, heard from the public, we've heard decisively from a number of members of the neighborhood, we've also heard clearly from the applicant about their vision and their desire to see this business locate in our city. In the end, we have to make decisions on these conditional uses, and we have them for a very specific reason, because they affect the neighborhood, and we want to hear, hear from them. We've heard. Call for the question, all those in favor. All right, we will now move to the accounts, or reports and recommendations from the city manager, Mr. Workinteen, is there anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I have no reports.
Thank you. Then we'll move to accounts payable in the back of the book, you've all had a chance to review that, can I have, can I have a motion to approve, please? Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Penner. Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the financial statement ending January 31st on the back of the book, you've all reviewed it in detail, can I have a motion, please? Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Funk? Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. We have the financial statement ending February 28th, can I have a motion to approve that, please? Counselor Funk? Seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. We have the accounts receivable on page 32, the transfer to taxes on, you have a list there, can, there's a resolution on the bottom, can I have someone move that, please? Counselor Penner? Seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Any questions of council? Seeing none. I'll move to correspondence and petitions. 11A, council, we've heard back, this is on page 33. We have heard back from the city of Zaporozhye in Ukraine, and we see that they are in favor of us moving forward with the Twin Cities process. Any comments? Any thoughts? Obviously, this is something that we're going to be working on, or will continue to work on through the mayor's office, and we'll go from there. Obviously, there's some details to be worked out, but obviously, there's a historic connection, and there's also a present connection, where we're starting to see people actually from that area move to our city, and move to our region, which is really exciting as well. So, more and more, we'll have a stronger connection with a city of our history and a city of our present. I'll keep you informed on the details of how that transpires. We have 11B, we have the minutes from the J-CAP library meetings on January 17th, 21st, and 22nd, this is on page 34, can I, any questions? Seeing none, take that as information. We have a letter from RMP Ted Falk on page 39. Counsel, how, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Funk?
Yes, I would actually like to make a motion to, to write a letter for endorsement for this, for this, this letter that he's written.
Thank you. Is there a second there? Counselor Fair, go ahead.
Manitoba's rural communities face significant challenges when it comes to crime prevention and the rising cost of police services. Limited police resources in rural areas are often significantly taxed, and residents routinely express concern about public safety. In response to these concerns, Shannon Stubbs, a member of parliament for Lakeland, has introduced a motion before parliament, calling for the study on the issue. The motion will include, but not be limited to, current rural crime rate and trends, existing RCMP and other policing resources in rural, remote, and indigenous communities in relation to population density, policing graphic area, and staffing shortages. Also, a current partnership with the provincial and municipal police force, and a possible recommendation to improve rural crime prevention to curb emerging crime rates. Also, this committee would report its findings to the House within six months of being adopted. As Chair of the RCMP Advisory Board, Counselor Swagstra and I brought the motion to a meeting for discussion. The Advisory Board recognized that rural crime is one of the top domestic issues in Canada, and feels that national assessment of crime rates and trends, and also analysis of RCMP resources would help identify a tangible solution for this growing problem. Our Member of Parliament Ted Falk has asked for council to consider writing a letter of endorsement to parliament to adopt this motion. The RCMP Advisory Board would encourage our council to do so, to do so as well. We feel that this study could greatly benefit us, because we have a large rural component to our detachment.
Thank you. Anything further?
Nope, I think it's all said.
Counselor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll just add that this is not the, this is a, this is a good motion, because we have in the past, as a council, advocated for improved policing in terms of the rural components as well, okay? Just as we know, with our RCMP detachment, we have 16 officers the city Steinbeck pays for, but there's also additional eight or so officers that are part of the rural component, and we know that what happens in the rural component has an impact on us as well, and vice versa. And in the past, we actually, we've even passed motions requesting additional officers for the rural part. So it makes sense to support this motion, and support our Member of Parliament in this regard, so I completely agree with Counselor Funk, and this is something we discussed with the RCMP Advisory Committee, and it does make sense to, to support this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing?
I just, I do want to talk to, I did, I did ask a couple of officers that I know that are right now in the nor, in the northern communities, and some of them are really, really struggling. They're, they've got eight officers, but four, a shortage of four, so there's only half, they're at half, half staff, and they, they're serving 5,000 people plus, that's 1,500 people per officer, and they're just, they're overwhelmed with their workload. And I think if, if this can help them, and figure out strategies and work with the shortages, I think that's, it's something we can do to better police our, our problems.
Good. Thank you. Further discussion, uh, there is no further, that was closing. But I get to say something. Counsel, obviously, you know, policing is something that we, we pay close attention to, and we have, well, you look at this weekend and the tragedy that we had in our community, and how important our police are to us as a community, and what tough work they do. And for them to have adequate resources is really important, not only in the city, but rurally. And so, asking for more information for this to be studied, I think is appropriate, and I, I think it's good for us as a city to support it, not only because of what, of what is happening inside our city, but how policing is happening around us. We are not an island, we're connected to our rural neighbors, and we want to make sure that they have adequate services as well. So, I think it's good to bring this forward, and, and certainly support the idea of making sure that we have adequate policing throughout the region. Call for the question, all those in favor. All right, there is no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Funk? Any discussion? All those in favor. Thank you.